Call the order of the Stokes County Board of Commission meeting for Monday, January the 27th. I'm gonna have Mr. Barncastle to have a prayer.
Let's pray. Praise be to Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, who came to you today in your name, your son, Jesus. We thank you for your many blessings. We thank you for the deliverance. Oh, we pray that you wrap your arms around the mayhem family here in our county, show them your blessings. Go with us, that is with the county, and be blessed with you. As always, Lord, bless our military, who gives us the freedom that we have today. In your name, amen.
Amen.
To the nations, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask for approval of the agenda, we need to make amendment to the agenda. We're adding Item C, Resolution to Reserve Funds for USDA Loan to the discussion agenda.
And I passed out copies to everybody of those two resolutions.
Okay.
So you can see that.
Can I get approval of the agenda with that note?
Get a motion to approve the agenda with the just indicated amendment part today.
Second.
Sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And do we have any public comments? So we go straight to the commissioner comments. Ms. Cox, you want to start it?
Glad to. Just thank everybody for being here today. We thank folks from the Stokes Partnership that are here to share some information with us from the Needs and Assessment Survey, and appreciate y'all being here and look forward to seeing your presentation. And that's about all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, great to see everybody. Ladies, welcome. Glad to see y'all here. I'd like to welcome everybody watching live stream, and everybody have a blessed day.
Great. I thank the chairman. I'd like to also welcome everybody and say, I guess I'm feeling really optimistic watching the Trump train crank up and roll here like it's going. We're really optimistic about the next couple of years. That's all I have.
Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Welcome, everybody, in attendance and also live streaming. Just want to take a minute to just tell you, I really, really appreciate it, all the department heads being there at our strategic planning meeting that we had, first one that we've had. I thought it went very, very well. And I want to thank the county manager and our assistant county manager for all the work. I know it's not easy to put one on, especially when it's the first one that we've ever done before. But I want to give a special shout out to the finance area. Did a great job, and I know that they were put under unusual circumstances. Again, this is something that we've never done before, and I want to say special thank you since day one that I was actually got seated here and actually happened to, you know, to look at how we were doing things. And I finally got some financial projections, at least the basic, the concept is there, and now we can, as we proceed into the budget season, with our, some things that we need to do still, I'll have a level of certainty to where we can look ahead for the future and plan for the future, instead of just going year to year and crossing our fingers, that everything is there. And it's not an indictment of anybody in the finance department previously. What it is, is we're finally catching up to where we need to be as an efficient and reliable county government and county administrations. So with that being said, thanks to everybody that's been involved.
Oh, Mr. Chair. Jeff, I'm not forgetting you this meeting.
Yeah, if I may, I'd just like to follow up on that. I thought we had a great conversation at that retreat, and I want to thank you all, all of our commissioners, for the robust conversation and discussion. I think we got exactly what we wanted to out of that meeting, and so I thank you for the guidance that resulted, and I think we're well on our way now to building a five-year plan that we can publish this next summer.
Amber?
I don't have anything. Just welcome. Thank you for being here. I'm looking forward to hearing about the presentation.
I'd like to welcome everybody also, and it looks like everybody survived the cold weather, which I love, so I'm in the minority. So with nothing else to say, let's read the conflict of interest. Before we go any further, does any board member have conflict with any of the items on the agenda for today, or one that might be perceived as a conflict of interest?
No.
All right, that brings us to the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. No, I was asking for a second. Sorry.
Flashback there. I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are we a challenge, Amber, to keep this up as you take notes?
A little bit. It's okay.
We have fun. Okay, information agenda. Teller Communicator of the Year.
They're on the way, so they should be here soon. She apologized, they were slammed.
No problem.
So if we could just maybe start with Item B.
Okay.
And then follow back up when they get here, if that's okay.
Stokes Partnership for Children?
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Cindy Tuttle. I'm the Executive Director of Stokes Partnership for Children, and I believe Justine Wayne is now, has joined us and has a PowerPoint presentation. And before I turn it over to Justine to go over the data, the details, Justine, if you'll flip to the first slide, I want to tell you a little bit about who we are, because you may not really be aware of who we are and what we do. I always say we're probably the best kept secret in Stokes County, but we're very active. We've been around since 1994. And the main thing to remember about us is that we're a local nonprofit organization led by a local Board of Directors. And we, however, with that said, probably 90% of our funding comes from the state and federal government. So we're one of those really quasi nonprofit strange beasts out there. There are 75 local partnerships across North Carolina. There's some partnerships that are consolidated, some counties that are consolidated. We are, we administer Smart Start. Probably everybody here knows what Smart Start is. And we also administer the NC pre-K program. We support children and families and early childhood providers and teachers for children birth to age five, not yet in kindergarten. We're a catalyst for bringing groups together for the sake of young children and families, and we educate the community on the local needs, which is what we're doing today, and we help develop solutions. That's, we're always creating new solutions for the unique issues in our county. And I do want to just mention, if you want to know a little bit about where our money comes from, you can see on the PowerPoint presentation that we've, and this was from last year, so you can see we have about a $1.6 million budget last year. This year, it's about $1.7 million, with, you can see the Smart Start revenue at a little over $729,000. NC pre-K makes up the largest amount of our funding, right at a million. Some of it comes from state, some of it comes from federal. I believe we have fewer federal dollars this year than we did last year. We've lost some federal dollars this year in administrative funds, which is a whole nother issue, but you can see where it comes from and where our expenditure is in. The primary expenditures are in NC pre-K, in our early care and education programs is the next. And well, subsidy comes close. I don't know if you all know that we give about $250,000 to DSS to administer childcare subsidy for us under our memorandum of understanding, based on what we, where we see the money should be spent, which is in high quality. So that's, that's it in a nutshell. We do have to match our Smart Start funds by 19%. It's actually a legislative mandate that we match our Smart Start dollars by 19%. Therefore, you hear about barbecue for books with a side of bluegrass, that's one way that we do it. It helps us match that 19%, which is over $100,000 that we have to match. Comes from multiple sources. But that's our funding methodology and who we are, but one of the things we do, as I mentioned, is we determine the need in the county and help develop solutions. So what we do is every three years, we do a community needs assessment. It's a comprehensive community needs assessment, and that helps us, that drives our funding decisions for three years and helps us identify needs, and we look at that and we look at local, lots of local data. We look at what the state requires us to do and so forth and so forth. So Justine Wayne is with us today, and she is a consultant that we've worked with for years. She works with a lot of the local Smart Start partnerships and is very knowledgeable about the Smart Start network. So I'm going to turn it over to her to go through the needs assessment, and then if you have any questions for us, I brought my dedicated staff with us today, Shannon Cox, Jessica Smith, and Shanda Cox. So everybody gets confused, but we're all here to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you, Cindy. Everyone can hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Just so you know, I can hear you guys, but I haven't been able to see anything, so one day maybe I'll be able, but for now, you can see the slide, right? I think I messed it up, so now you can't see my face, but I won't block anything this way. Okay. So as Cindy said, I've been doing the needs assessment with them. This might be, I think I figured out my fourth one, and we do them every three years. So I've been watching things from afar in your county. I'm in the Triangle, and Cindy does a great job of trying to get the community input. And so we, hopefully some of you saw the request for folks to fill out the survey back in the fall. In addition to just getting some community input, there's two subgroups. We asked for parents of young children to answer some specific questions, and then also the childcare providers in the community. We want to kind of get our finger on the pulse of that group. So there are some folks that are in childcare that work in Stokes, but they might not live in the county. So that's just a little nuance there, but the questions they were asked are about young children and their caregivers in Stokes County. Let's see, so I'm going to highlight a few of the things that we thought would be most relevant for you all, and this is about the challenges for services in the county. And one thing we want to just highlight is that over 50% said a lack of parenting support or child development information is a challenge. And of course, we should keep in mind, like down here, transportation wasn't cited as an issue. Families without transportation are going to be less likely to complete a survey, so you know, a lot of these are people's opinions and things, so just keeping that in mind. This one is focused on early childhood specifically, and what rose to the top here is the lack of availability of high-quality childcare or pre-K near home or work. This has been a theme for years and continues to be a major issue. There were some other questions about challenges in addition, but basically there was a few themes about comments that just came up, and it was the availability and lack of childcare or affordability of childcare, lack of mental health services, and the folks wanting help navigating that process, and then also behavioral or special needs for young children, people mentioning they need resources and support. So these things are going to, you'll see, keep coming up throughout the presentation. When we asked about their greatest concern, what rose to the top is just being ready for kindergarten in general, and then accessibility, availability, and in particular, sometimes it was noted in the northern part of the county, that there's a bit of a childcare desert there, is what we call it. Social, emotional readiness, behavior concerns, affordability, safety in schools, and high-quality childcare, those were ones most frequently mentioned in the comments. When we asked about programs and services that are most needed, the very clear winner here was affordable childcare and pre-K. One thing Cindy mentioned is childcare subsidy, and that is something that their Smart Start funds and the Division of Child Development provide subsidy to help families support childcare, but even with that, people are saying it's not widely enough available, or there's wait lists, things like that, or people that don't quite qualify still, childcare's so expensive, it's hard for them to afford. Just a little context there about that one. Mental health services, we know since COVID, things have been really hard for children, families especially, and this is the group that are, we're kind of, some of these kids were born during lockdown, et cetera, in the last few years, and they're showing some of the impacts of that, I think. So now I'm talking about, was there a question or comment? Okay. So this was about opinion about childcare from pre-K in Stokes, and there's mostly a consensus more high-quality childcare is needed. There's some other questions in here that might be of interest. I think you're provided with a copy of the slides, so you'll be able to read over them outside of the meeting. I'm going through quickly because I don't want to take up too much of your time. There's a section I mentioned about parents of children under six in the home, and so some people had children that were older than this age, and so they weren't asked this next set of questions, and some people just didn't have any children, which is appropriate because we did want community input, or the NIC childcare providers without children So this is a big one, up here in the purple. Before this survey, did you know how North Carolina state law defines childcare? It defines it as three or more unrelated children under 13 receiving care from a non-relative on a regular basis, and that means at least one time a week, for more than four hours a day, but less than 24 hours. When all three of those conditions exist, regulation is required by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and they issue the licenses that we talk about, like star-rated licenses, as well as just regulating care in full-day church programs, for example. Part-day program, because it's only four hours a day, doesn't have to be regulated. This was a new question we hadn't asked in the past, and I'm so glad we did. This was a great idea Cindy had, is, you know, are people aware that this is really what constitutes requirements for legal care? And 68%, 58% did not realize that. So when we talk about, you know, are you searching for care? If people aren't using an agency that knows about this, they might not find out that those are the requirements, and they might just use a neighbor or, you know, which we're less worried about if it's just one child, you know, but if it's a group of kids, then we get concerned about safety, and that's where sometimes this kind of can be a little bit dicey. Okay, so parents' choices, the parents in the survey, we had 86 people respond. The top half is the 2024 survey, and I did include from 2021 at the bottom, just to kind of compare, it's somewhat similar. I put red for the waitlist, that's why I was just bad to hear, folks are just waiting, and orange is the family, friend, neighborhood center. We're not clear, those could be legally operating, you know, meeting that definition of just two kids or one kid for under the number of hours that would rule out any illegal, I guess. Anyway, not saying that clearly, sorry. But we just, you know, there's a lot that we don't know about in what's happening. And the, but a lot of people who answered were in licensed care or part-day programs that, you know, they're only four hours, aren't operating legally. And we were, more than half need some assistance for help paying. That was 59%, and 36% need help paying for childcare if they aren't getting any. So this is really clearly an issue. Okay, now we're going to move on to childcare providers and some of the facility information. So this time, we also handled it a little differently. We said, are you currently a childcare provider, or have you previously been? So we asked some of the same questions of folks that are still providing childcare, as well as some who are no longer in that, in the field, if that makes sense. We can see that we're slowly falling behind when we look at the past few years of retaining. We're losing people to the field more quickly than regaining. If you see, the green line is what you would kind of expect, 10, 13, 16 years, if those same providers had stayed in care, whereas we're seeing, the gray one is in childcare field, so they could switch childcare sites and still be considered in the childcare field 14 years, 16 years, 17 years. And then the blue line is their current site, 7.7, 6.9, 8.7. So they're not staying in the sites longer, you know, as time goes on, I guess. They're not still in the same sites, unfortunately. All right, so then we're thinking, well, why? What are the challenges that face you working in early childhood? So I ranked them with the most that said either extremely challenging or very challenging most often, and they said the underpaid is the top issue there, then stretched thin and overwhelmed, et cetera. You can read this for yourselves, but that's not a shock. And then, let's see, we need to look at how challenging are each of the following? These are more specific. Children's behavior and social, emotional challenges and mental health. This is pretty significant. If you look, even including yellow is somewhat challenging. It's up, over 75% are saying that's a challenge, so that's concern. That's more of an issue than the lack of respect as a professional, which happens, or lack of parent involvement, or children's physical health being challenges. So we ask each time, do you think you'll be working in the early childhood field three years from now? And we always have folks who say, no, definitely not, and as well, no, probably not, and yes, probably here in 2024. We're only at about 59% of the respondents, and you can add in the yes, definitely was another 14% of just four people. And we asked those that had previously been in the field, would you consider returning? And for the most part, they're not thinking about returning. And I just wanted to highlight, in 2021 on the left there, we had similar no, probably not, but the proportion, you can see the yes, probably is smaller than the yes, is closer in size, I'm sorry, to the yes, definitely. Yes, definitely shrank from 40% to 14. So that's, you know, a shift that we should keep an eye on and make sure, we're trying to raise awareness that this is a crisis in childcare, basically, just to say it another way. Okay. Which of the following could help keep you in the early childhood field? Well, current providers are in the green, and the little stripes are the previous providers. I threw those on top. Better pay is coming up again. More support for children's behavior and mental health needs. You're probably getting the sense of the themes we've discovered here. Some also mentioned a better or retirement plan, even paid sick time, things like that, benefits. They're not great, just to say it briefly. When we asked, do you have another paid job in addition to your job in childcare? Several people said, yes, on a regular basis, and some said only from time to time, but that's concerning. You know, if you want to dedicate your life to a field and a profession, and then you need to take another job for more income, that's certainly unfortunate, and this is exhausting work, to be clear, and I'm sure everyone would agree. In the last few years, what types of financial assistance have you qualified or received? And basically, several different types, from food stamps to Medicaid, the childcare subsidies we mentioned, other things. So it comes down to more than 50% of those who responded received at least one type of assistance, and so that's another sign that the pay and the benefits are just not adequate, and that's, that's, gives us some context to why people aren't staying in the field or might want to leave the field. We are also hoping that, you know, we know that high quality is in part determined by having college education in the early childhood field. We are interested in them having an associate's degree specifically. It could be a child development or early childhood. And a lot of people, though, don't yet have those degrees, and I'm not going to go into all the details, but they talked about, you know, what keeps them from enrolling. Some already have their degree or took classes, wonderful, but a lot of people said just the cost, or not enough time while working, finding classes, a lot of different reasons, and it's unfortunate to see there's still barriers for folks that want to enroll at state base. Looking at the benefits for a second, what does your employer offer? Not everyone offers paid time off. Sometimes I think folks in other fields don't realize that that can be, you know, somewhat routine in childcare. Paid holidays, they don't always get paid sick days, and group health insurance. So those are the benefits that I was kind of referencing more specifically, besides retirement that we mentioned. When we ask what they're earning, 39% were earning under $15 an hour. It's not a living wage, you can't really support a family, and in some places, you can't afford to support yourself. So that's really concerning. What's interesting is it's not just like the assistant teachers, or, you know, like in terms of what role they have, making the less, the least. There's directors and owners that are, those are the solid little blocks that are showing up in all the different pay levels. So for 2024, we have some kind of main conclusions. We have a major childcare crisis in the country, in North Carolina and in Stokes County as well. The behavior and mental health issues with young children are continuing to worsen. We have a childcare worker shortage and a problem with the college-educated workforce because of low compensation. There was this new theme we talked about that we could see throughout that there are some issues of just awareness about some of the services that are actually available from the Stokes County, Stokes Partnership, or just early childhood information that they can help provide also. So that was something that locally is certainly a new revelation. For example, folks got the survey, but only one in four had not heard of the partnership beforehand, so that was very concerning. We mentioned about the not realizing how the state law defines childcare. That's kind of a, you know, community education piece we think about, and helps need in for the mental health system. Okay, let's see. Just a quick little peek at, well, who was it that answered the survey, besides, you know, parents and providers? The majority were white or Caucasian. Most were between 21 and 50 years old. We did have some older folks. Five women were responsive, so, I'm sorry, that female thing got cut off, but you can tell, if it was only 5% of the others, 95% women. And mostly English speakers. There were seven Spanish speakers and one Messiah, which we have to, we have to know now. We did, we were curious, and so we asked also about like their access to internet in various ways. Was it, do they have a phone, a smartphone, broadband, computer access, however, just to try and get context for who it is that's able to fill in an online survey, how did they access it? And then we also wanted to know, everybody, this is 151 people's education level, so you can see it's really a cross-section. This wasn't, you know, 68% had completed some type of degree, whether it's technical school, associates, bachelors, bachelors, or graduate school. it's technical school, associates, bachelors, bachelors or graduate school, but we did have some folks, you know, who were only high school level responding, so I think that's a good cross section. This is, there's some slides that kind of talk about the community data. This wasn't stuff I asked about. This is available through the Public School Forum of North Carolina. They call it the roadmap of need. They've been doing it for several years. And the first little set of purple ones is the overall ranking across from 2014 all the way to 2023. And it's a little counterintuitive. I have to figure out maybe a better way to do this, but one being the best. So actually, in 2023, Stokes rose to twenty-sixth out of the one hundred counties in North Carolina, so that's, that's the good news. You had previously been holding around thirty-eight, thirty-nine, fortieth. Then they have specific domains with more information, with more, sorry, indicators. And you can see the health has kind of stayed around, it's at thirty-two now, physical health, sorry. And then mental health has gotten better, it's up to forty-nine, it had been seventy-eight, eighty. And then overall education outcomes are forty-one, slipped a little bit. They have a new section, education input, which was twenty-fourth, so that sounds decent. Overall economic development, it improved in recent years and up to twenty-fifth. And I thought maybe a little more depth for a few might be of interest. So this is the education input. You can see what makes up those rankings. And then there's education outcomes, what that includes, graduation rate, third grade reading proficiency, math proficiency. And you can see they're kind of scattered. And then the blue is the physical health rankings, shows teen pregnancies gone up a little bit for Stokes. And this is just compared to other counties, so keep in mind, this isn't the raw data. These are the rankings. Childhood fatalities have gone down, so that's wonderful. And then they added a new measure, uninsured, which is, looks like it's not great, forty-sixth. And the mental health and safety rankings, they've changed, so this looks kind of weird because there's only twenty-twenty-three for most of them. And unfortunately, Stokes is ninety-fifth in drug and medicine overdose rate. That is one where so few numbers are going to make a big difference, if you think about how data works, so that would be one where you might want to have more information to see how much of a problem it truly is right now. This is their economic rankings. So in the top left is the ranking in, out of the hundred counties, but then I actually pulled the data, the indicators, so you can see the median household income for North Carolina is the dark green compared to Stokes, the brighter green. And it's stayed similar across years in terms of being just a little bit behind North Carolina as a whole, which is pretty impressive, really. And then you see child food insecurity has gotten, has improved, and the unemployment rate is also gotten better. And there's, yeah, I think that was, those are most of them. So I'm going to send this, let's see, oops. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Right?
I guess the general part-
Pull back up too, I'm sorry.
A general question would be for me. So for pre-K classes, is it, so do other nonprofits also allowed to come in and do pre-K classes, or would it just be from the Stokes County Partnership?
Well, we are the, I'm up here justing, so, I know you can't see me. So the way it works is there's one contract administrator per county, and what we do is contract out. So we contract with the Stokes County Schools. We contract with Head Start, and we contract with private childcare, and they actually are the ones that, that do the actual program. They have the classrooms and so forth and so forth. We monitor, make sure they're compliant and that, and that kind of thing.
So basically, the funds roll through you-
Right.
And then you just, then you contract it out?
Contract out.
Okay.
Now, in North Carolina, about, it's about a fifty-fifty split between local partnerships and the school systems as to who is contract administrators. It just varies for the county, and the county preference in Stokes is for us to do it, which we've always had the contract.
That's just for NC pre-K, that specific program. Childcare sites are able to offer pre-K classrooms as well, not outside of that NC pre-K program. And the Stokes Partnership isn't operating any childcare, they're supporting childcare.
Yeah, there is a difference between, just say, a standard childcare, standalone childcare center, and then when we talk about NC pre-K, because NC pre-K, and I have the NC pre-K coordinator here if you have in-depth questions, but NC pre-K is really about a blended structure. So you may have a classroom that has Head Start kids, it has children who are receiving special services from the school system, qualify for exceptional children services. So there are some blended funding, there's some blended funding through the school system to support those classrooms.
And how many sites do we have?
We have nine sites and thirteen classrooms. Couple of our public schools have more than one classroom.
So in terms of the survey from salaries, how, how did, how many?
Good question, I know what you're going to say. That was not, what, when she was talking about salaries and benefits, that was not really applicable to the Stokes County Schools. That was mainly private childcare centers. The Stokes County school system has their own pay scale and benefits, and it's more competitive than, say, our private centers.
Do they have, do y'all have a copy of what licensed childcare looks like in the county?
As far as where they are?
They have today or not?
Where they are, where they're located? We have that.
One of the handouts, I wasn't sure if-
The early care and education workforce?
Yes.
Flues? This was maybe emailed?
It was only agenda.
Agenda.
I'm just going to say, it shows that there's fifteen centers in Stokes County providing care to four hundred and eighty kids, and there's, then there's also childcare homes. There are very few of those now, but that, there's a lot of independently operating, and so that's why we have to do a survey like this in order to, or the state does, in order to actually learn what they're being paid, because it's not like a school system where you can easily get that data. So some of the folks that are employed by the schools responded to the survey, but a lot of them were outside of this, this place, and were all different kinds of childcare. I didn't include some of those slides, but some of that's available if you're interested in more, and we're filling it in.
We had it in our packet.
And I just want to emphasize that as far as the needs assessment for us, we can only focus on some, on the areas that we have a focus on, or that, where we have an ability to do something about it. And so there's some areas, like probably the substance abuse piece, we're not as involved with that, though we're always at the table. But we are, we're working with the children in classrooms who may have parents who are abusing substitutes in this, therefore leading to major behavioral issues and so forth and so forth. So I think the, if I were to say what the takeaway here is for everyone is, and we need to really focus on this moving forward, is that Stokes County has a childcare crisis. And I know we get excited when new jobs come to the county, you know, we just had fifty new jobs with Wieland, I don't know if I said that right, never have said, but it's great-
Well, it's V.
Wieland, okay.
Like a V, yeah.
Wieland, okay, well, good, I'm glad you clarified that. But, you know, and we hope more jobs come to Stokes County, but you really have to think about where are these, where are their kids going to be cared for during the day? Where are they going to be safe? Because we're seeing constantly the illegal, I shouldn't say that word, the kidship, kid with the friend- Friend, family and neighbor care, which-
Upset, it's all right.
But if they're following, but it's what, up to three?
Up to three or more.
Three or more have to be licensed. And so I don't think that's happening a lot, and I think that's where a lot of the kids may be going for care now in Stokes County. And that's a felon. It's a felon. And if we know about it and we have an address, we will report them to the Division of Child Development, but we are not investigators. And anytime we try to broach the subject, you know, we kind of get, we're not in a popular place, because a lot of parents don't have a choice. They've got to work. They don't have a choice. You know, my favorite, people say to me, well, you know, this, that's perfectly fine, she's cut, he, he's perfectly fine taking care of these children. I said, yes, fine until it's not. And, you know, do they have first aid? Do they have CPR? Do they have, do they know about SIDS? We've had a couple of cases of SIDS in our county recently. You know, those are the kind of things that is vital to know. So I'd say that we, we have to, we need to think about what we're going to do about childcare, so that we can have a well-rounded county, so when these new businesses come in, we, we can reassure them that we can take care of their children and that they're safe.
But this is a crisis throughout the state.
Statewide, probably countrywide, it's a crisis. I've talked to Kyle Hall about it. You know, I think it's an economic development problem as well. If you, if you, if you don't have childcare, your parents can't work.
What are they doing about it?
Well, there's a whole lot of talk about it, that's just it. There's a lot of people in Raleigh talking about the money that we need. You know, there were some federal stabilization grants that were helping the childcare programs that went away after COVID, and so they haven't, the states put in some money, but not enough to keep that going. You know, the stabilization grants were given teacher raises and benefits and things, and so all that's backed down. The problem is, is the capacity, like we don't have buildings and places for the childcare centers, and then the teacher pay, you can see what the teacher pay is. The, there's a plethora of problems with the workforce. We actually have a workforce coordinator, Jessica Smith, and we are, you know, doing everything, everything we can with workforce. That's, that's, that's why I say this is an economic development issue as well, and probably should be, there should probably should be a convening of some folks to really have a heart-to-heart discussion about this, and see what we might could do, what, what we could do as part of the remedy. Part of the problem is startup funds. Anytime a new childcare program calls us up and says, or someone wants to start a program, say this lady that's keeping these kids, that's not licensed, you know, she may call, she may nerve up to call us and go, well, what can I do? Well, then she's, immediately, when she starts hearing about the licensure requirements that the state requires and everything she needs to do, and the, you know, what her house has to look like and her fence in the backyard, there's, she doesn't have the money to do it. So, and we don't have startup funds, so startup funds is one area. So, you know, there's no easy answer. I go to all these meetings with my state counterparts, and that's what we sit around and talk about, so what can we do? And we are requesting additional fifteen million from the state legislature statewide. That won't go far in Stokes by the time it gets to us, but it is, it's, it is an issue. The second thing to take away from this is our children's mental health, and mental health in general. We do see, we are seeing a lot of kids with behavioral issues, very young kids. I'm a, I'm an old social worker from way back, and we didn't see that back then, and we see it today, some real behavioral issues. So we do have a behavior and collusion support specialist, Shanda Cox. You guys actually pitch in about ten thousand a year for this position, so thank you, we appreciate that, I hope you continue to do so. But she's classroom-based, she doesn't go out to like one-on-one counsel parents. She works to try to, is a classroom-based support. Because sometimes it's-
Teachers and children, and then I refer out to, in the county, what's lacking for us is mental health support for birth to five, so like play therapists or therapists in county that provide services to that age group. When transportation did come up, our families cannot go to Forsyth. They just don't have that ability, and that is definitely impacting our families with young children who would want to get those mental health services before they get to public school, for instance. So just supporting them in the classroom, and then I try to provide the best resources that I can, even though we don't have them, but whatever they can do, I try to get that for them, so.
I have a question too.
Okay.
Thanks for coming, Cindy. The, first off, just a couple of questions. I don't like, there was one stat in there that went from forty-five to fifty-nine percent of people that are requiring assistance to do the childcare, I think it was-
The childcare subsidies?
Yeah, it said something like people that need assistance in order to do it, I guess, like men.
That's not childcare subsidy, that was actually about the folks that are working in childcare, that they in fact themselves are not paid enough and have had to accept various types of assistance.
Oh, okay. Would that, would that be partially caused by inflation we've had the last two or three years, probably?
I'm sure that inflation plays in.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah, okay. My next question is, on the licensing, we were talking about, you were just talking about with three people or whatever, is it, is that licensing procedure overregulated, do you guys think, or not? Should it be easier to get licensed?
No.
I don't think so.
Safety.
Yeah. Like I always try to tell my providers, there's rules for a reason, because obviously something has happened in the past that has caused this to happen. A lot of that is, like for homes, for instance, there might have been a chemical left out that now we have to have all these procedures that your whole house is regulated as far as safety goes, because people have left items out for children to get into, and then there's been accident. The regulations for like fencing is to keep them safe and contained in the event a childcare provider can't run after them as best they could. And so I don't think it's overregulated, I think it's there for a purpose. I just think there are a lot of them.
It is very overwhelming, it's very challenging for our childcare providers. I mean, I think the key would be to probably support those family childcare homes that are out there, say, in the northern part of the county. It's going to be easier to license them than to find a building in a center to where you can have a big program. You know, the thing would be to try to, to support them and, and break it out for them, but I think, I think it's overwhelming. But there are plenty of counties that have a good supply. We had, back in the day, when I think I first started working, and it was about, Justine's got eighteen, had eighteen family childcare homes back in two thousand and three, somewhere. Family childcare homes, not that many.
I think we had nine when I started in two thousand and seventeen, and we only have two currently. And those two are probably, within the next couple of years, will probably be retired at that point. And so there's definitely a focus on family childcare homes because it is an easier process, and we do help walk them through that process. There's a lot of stuff up front that they have to get done in order to open that facility, so definitely some startup support would be phenomenal.
If they don't have a fenced-in backyard-
Is that just a financial matter, the start support?
Startup, it is, startup is a financial, like a fence. If you have to fence in your backyard, you know how expensive that is. So what if it's a fenced-in backyard that's stopping them? Or play, or maybe just the minimal playground requirements, but, you know, just, you know, there has to be, they have to be outside, what, thirty minutes, thirty minutes?
An hour.
An hour a day? So something simple like having something outside for them to play on and some equipment and just the basics. It's, a lot of these folks would do it maybe if they had the resources to do it.
We have, we have calls monthly that say, hey, can you send me the information? I'll walk them through it, but it does come down typically to the cost of that startup process, so.
That's why I was wondering, you know, safety's, of course, important, but if you overregulate everybody out of being able to do this, then you have maybe a bigger problem than you do the safety thing.
That's been, that, that discussion's going on in Raleigh.
Okay.
There's some, there's some overriding of educational requirements and things like that going on in-
Okay.
In Raleigh, but, you know, that, and it's so important that the, the youngest children have the highest educated teachers, caregivers, because the brain develops the fastest during the first fourteen months of life, and then you probably heard the first two thousand days campaign, that's when the brain is really developing, pre-kindergarten, and children need the stimulation, and, you know, you've seen those horrible videos or heard the stories of people bringing children in in a car seat and just sitting them in the room and leaving them, and, you know, how horrible that is. I mean, that's not, that's not too far-fetched, so it's kind of a use it or lose it.
Yeah, and we do have a lot of, instead of illegal childcare, it's family, friend and neighbor care. We do have, we do have a lot of that in Stokes County. There's a lot of that put out onto social media, and we do try to inform the folks that do provide that of what kind of the regulations are in Stokes County, but there is a lot of that. I see it every day on social media, so.
What about the YMCA? Do they help? Do they help with any of this or they set up or kids?
They only take school age.
Yeah, school age and up. And birth to five, they don't take care of, so.
You wouldn't, you don't want to blend the preschool-aged children with the school-aged children.
Okay.
I got a question.
Good, yeah.
What is the average cost that a family is paying per child for in-home care versus a facility? Or is it about the same or?
It's about the same. Um, our, let's just go with infant care right now. Average in the, in the county is 165 to 180 per week. Um, and that's on, that's actually pretty low. Forsyth County's running about 250 a week or more, 318 I think was the last one I saw in Forsyth. Stokes County, we're a little under that, um, a lot under that actually. Um, so 165 to 185 infants. Um, our homes might be a little bit less than that. Um, it just kind of depends since we have two, um, they've stayed pretty, pretty consistent with about 165 probably. Um, and it kind of goes down as they get a little bit older, you'll get a little bit less than that, but, um, overall that's kind of what they're charging at the moment.
And some.
I'm curious. A lot more than one.
Yeah, it's, it's extremely, and what families don't realize is that the money that they put into it doesn't go to just the facility. It goes to running costs. It goes to in, providing insurance if they do, um, food costs which are high, um, and stuff like that. So it's just not, hey, this teacher's getting $20 an hour, which she's not. So that's what the main issue is.
Daughter keeps one in Florida, keeps her friend's kid, um, that's one-year-old and they pay her over 500 a week.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, my goodness.
Tell her she's doing real good.
Extremely well. Well, I will say our, a lot of our centers are very hesitant to charge even market rate because they're afraid that, um, they'll lose their families if they charge market rate, but then it impacts the quality of the centers or whether the centers can stay open. There's closed classrooms, um, all over this, the county because they, they can't afford to have another teacher in a room. Um, it's, it's just a, you know, like I said, it's not just unique to Stokes. It's, it's a real problem, but I, you know, I, one thing I'd love for you all to do if you haven't already, there's, um, I think Amber shared the open-ended questions or responses from our survey. Um, and so if you'll read what people are actually saying, I think that's more valuable than anything because you will hear a plea for help on a lot of levels. Um, and I, I always, I can really hear it really well when I hear it coming from actually, you know, something they've written that's come straight from them about how they're feeling and how, you know, there's just help, there's no childcare, I can't work, um, you know, since I'm in a position that, I live in Lawsonville or whatever and, um, I have to drive all the way to Surrey County or whatever. Um, I read those comments.
My city brochure will go, this private home, we care, how many are they allowed to have? Does that vary by age or?
It does, it depends on the age that they have typically, Justine, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I think it does, I think it depends on their age. I think it's five maximum. I think with the.
They can have as many school-aged children as they want.
I'll have to, I'll have to double.
Childcare is five.
Yeah.
So that, now that's licensed family childcare. Licensed family childcare.
Yeah. If they're not licensed.
Is it up to three or?
Up to three.
Up to three if they're not.
Two unrelated to you. And then once you get to the third, we need to be licensed.
But this problem didn't start yesterday.
No, it's just progressively gotten worse.
Well, for those who've been around the county a long time, you might remember, we had childcare centers, you know, like in Danbury at the hospital. We had one up on the hill that, that, um, Happy Hills, um, we had, we've had, we had one childcare center in Pine Hall. Oh, yes, Sandy's, yes, yes. So we've had, there's been a lot of childcare programs that shut down over the years. Um, I know the one Happy Hills is a perfect example of, um, not being willing to pay, to charge market rate. We, Shannon and I both sat down with them, I'll never forget this, and said, years ago, we said, you're going to have to start charging more or your center's going to close. And they said, if we charge more, our parents won't come here anymore. Well, the center closed. So, you know, this is, um, you know, a lot of it's, oh, and then Northwest Child Development closed, um, a few years ago. They were king.
Country Adventure.
Country Adventure, it was run by Leon Edman. It closed. So it's just kind of a, it's a cycle that's getting worse, but it's one we can't ignore. Um, you know, we're, like I say, we're not licensing, we don't, we don't license, we don't regulate, we provide technical assistance. We're here to provide support and tell people what they need to do. Um, we're not going to, um, criticize you or what have you. We want, you know, we want people to, to, to get involved and get, you know, licensed. There's probably, if they're licensed, these family childcare homes, they could draw childcare subsidies. So that could, that's, um, to me, that would be a big plus. If you're a business owner, you can draw subsidy for the children. That's a, that's a big deal.
Wouldn't be a lot worse than what it is out there. All these churches had to open daycare centers. We got a lot of those clothes in our county, the ones that did do it like Country Adventure, places like that.
Right, right.
You know, a lot of churches have started them out.
They've got, there's some good after-school programs too at churches.
They seem, there were several areas, um, where you guys are showing an improvement trend, like going from 40-something to 25 or 26. I saw like several measurements. What, what would you attribute that to? Is that something?
Just a caution that, just to remember, these are very small numbers and it's not the same people answering three years later. So I tried to include some context and it could definitely be a trend, but it's definitely not precise.
Okay.
You have one in particular that you?
Uh, I got, there was so much I couldn't digest all of.
It's a lot. Jess, that's why we hire her because she loves data.
If you're doing 20, you know, the top 25 out of 100, that's pretty good. I mean, on those areas that you got.
There were areas of improvement from the last three years, there were. And some stayed the same and childcare, lack of childcare and mental health, behavioral health is still bad, you know, situation.
Any more questions? Uh, it's a lot to digest, but y'all done a great job. Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
You're welcome.
Thank you for having me. Take care everyone.
You're welcome. Thanks. Okay, I see a telemarketer, I'm telecommunicator, not marketer. God of the years here, so.
That's who Keith talks to a lot.
I think I've had ten towels since I've been sitting here.
I'm Nicole, Director of 911, and we're here today just to introduce our telecommunicator up here, Mrs. Beth May.
Hi.
Um, she is a treasure to our department. If you've been around, I know Wayne's been around for quite some time. She's heard Beth already.
We've been where to go for years.
Yes. She's very much so. She is a, she is a treasure in our department. She is, um, if your computer don't tell you where somebody lives, we call Beth. If you don't know where somebody's horse is, we call Beth. If you want to know where a cow is, call Beth. What color's your mailbox? We call Beth. Um, even when she's off work, we call Beth. Um, she, uh, recently, actually this past, um, October, was it October? It's in October. Um, she was actually deployed up to the Hurricane Helene, um, to Mitchell County. Um, and that's kind of where we got our adopted 911 center program that we did this Christmas was Beth made some, some friends while she was there and she decided she wanted to do something for them because they were hit hard too. Um, I think 911 kind of gets forgotten about when it comes to those kind of things. So, you know, they got all those calls and they were overrun and she went up there and they were working off of the Star Links and didn't have power, they had generators, she had sleeping.
I slept in a cabin.
Yeah, so that was actually really cool though. When we actually went up to Mitchell County, we got to see everything and it was actually really beautiful up there, even though the devastation that was going on. It was actually a really beautiful place up there. So it was very, um.
I keep throwing that on Miss up there. I fell in love with it.
Um, she is ours. Um, anyways, we, we get nominations and these are, you get telecommunicator of the year from nominations of your fellow employees and, and we had a couple of nominations for Beth and then I, I don't know who they distributed them to because that was before me. Um, so if they picked that, then I think it was a, she's a great choice and we're proud of her. Thank you.
How many years, um, have you been with Stokes County?
I started with the Sheriff's Department in 91. Then they merged us with EMS in 97 for E911. And I was there until 2006 and I went to Wake Forest University for 14 years. Um, college kids come out and they're free, but not me. And then I come back to the county in 2019 and I worked at both places full-time for three months. And then I let Wake go and stayed here because I only live six miles from here. So I've been in it since 91.
So you've seen, you've seen all the changes and all the, all the different programs and...
Went from, take a call and have to get up and go look at the map on the wall and find out where it is.
Directing, directing the deputies and the FAR and the EMS to.
Two weeks of training threw me loose. That was scary because there weren't no cell phones. So you had to stop at a payphone and call collect.
Well, I just want to say, I, I, you know, I, I appreciate, I appreciate you. I appreciate the old timers that are stuck, you know, that has stuck around.
Orange bread.
And.
What you are.
Hey, I'm old.
That was worse than me calling her a telemarketer.
No, to me, that's a badge of honor. That's how I, that's, that's how I'm old school.
Was here before some of these buildings.
Yeah. And that's, you can, with people like us, I'm retired now, but people like us, you know, when you're still, when you're still in the field and you're working, you help the new people that, that are coming on and you're giving them advice that you can't look on a textbook, you can't look up in a computer, you're giving them that. And then plus, when things really start going sideways, that you're that, that level voice, that, that level hand, people are going to look to you to lead. And that's, and, and that's what I appreciate. And that's why, you know, we need to keep retaining, I'm saying enjoy retirement, when it's ready to go.
Well, I'm not going anywhere till soon.
You're, you're going to love it, but people like you, you've really got my, you've really got my respect and admiration and it makes me feel better, even though I don't answer those let calls at night anymore, but it makes me feel a little bit better knowing that people like you are still around for the young whippersnappers.
I mean, when I went to Wake for 14 years, they were private, so I missed it my entire time.
Yeah. So you're, anyway, I just went.
I have to get a job after retiring anyway. I'm never going.
I'm saying retired is good now.
I still go on my trips.
But, but at the same time, thank you for sticking around and thank you for what you do.
Keith, y'all only once a night.
You, uh, you remember the punch cards? We put, I'm not kidding now, I dispatched, I dispatched for about two years for this county and we had punch cards. Every time they'd check you around, we'd punch a card. And you don't see me, punch a card. Now, if you had eight fire departments out that day, you punched your cards all the way across here and made them down. And you go back through, you pick them up again, punch them. Lucille Wall taught me how to dispatch. That's what she taught me.
At one time.
Yep.
Thank y'all.
And she's done an outstanding job, she still does, because I hear on the radio all the time she hears me.
She knows, she works all the time. She works, she'll come in, she works night, she's actually at 11 to 11, but she'll work, you just worked 11, B to 7A this weekend. So she, she likes to work. She's truly, she really is a treasure to our department.
Don't run off Rick's got something to say too. I also want to congratulate you and tell you how much we appreciate you. The, uh, you know, the whole system, you guys are the foundation of the whole system. All the emergency services don't function until you guys get them rolling. So it's critically important. You're just as important or more so than they are as far as I'm concerned. And, uh, I really appreciate the work and the, you know, it's really challenging kind of work you guys do down there, not just the technical aspects, but the shifts you have to work and all that stuff. And it's just seamless. We just assume it's going to happen, you know, and thanks to you guys, it does. So we really appreciate that.
It doesn't ever go smoothly because we've run out of trucks. We've run out of trucks today several times. Day's been a day.
Funny you said that at 11 o'clock this morning, y'all was out of trucks.
It's a truck.
I heard the radio.
And we've got the radio guy there updating radios. So one console's down and then Kevin's console is down, so he couldn't help. We've just been winging it.
Son, you got anything?
Yep, I, I really would like to congratulate you and thank you for the job you do and, and all the telecommunicators. Like you said, you're the foundation, uh, of everything and getting those calls out and the, and everything mentally that y'all have to hear and deal with and that's, that's a lot. So take care of your mental health as well.
Thank you.
Never sit in that chair, you don't know what it's like.
Trust me. And I know you're not going anywhere because you were raised with the same work ethic I was.
I'm not going anywhere.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you want to picture?
Uh, sure.
Yeah, that's a good one. Yes, do a picture.
I know Beth and she, I know Beth and she don't want a picture.
She's going. Can't, we're breaking the picture.
No.
No, you can't with me. No, man, this is your one.
You go with me.
Here, go get on one side and I'm, I'm not standing down there.
You don't by yourself.
I'm standing right here.
This is your daddy. Sorry, yes, I got this right here in front of all this.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Come on.
Sorry to have a sit. We kind of rearranged it.
You look fine.
We're at a different place right there in Houston.
Yeah, for sure.
I had my meeting with him.
That's what I want to talk to you about.
Before I meet with him.
Thank y'all.
Bye, thank you guys.
And bring us to our discussion agenda. And item A is performing evaluation tools for the manager. It says you're present, you're doing your thing, Brad.
I know, see my, my neighbors.
You want to, you want to go down the front and talk to them?
Well, I passed out the, I can just say I passed out the updated, um, changes from last time. I think the main change I wanted was just to add the comment section on the bottom of each section. So I got, um, I was able to get with Tori because he has the special adobe thing and we get where I would have added in there. So the comment section should be added. I passed it out, um, this morning for the meeting. So the comment section should be added, I passed it out, um, this morning for the meeting, so you should have it in front of you. But that was the only change I think that we had made at that time.
Right, so that's kind of where we left, left off. The recommendation was that one last chance to review it. With, um, the comment section added to each, to each block. And it mainly come out of the one that was titled from White County is what we, we transferred it to. So I'll, I'll open it up to...
I have one.
The comments.
Go ahead. The, um, I talked to Jeff, he likes this version and I'm fine with that. There's one thing I'd like to add to it though, from the other one, it's item number 26. I'll read it to you. It says, effectively evaluates performance of staff members who report to the appointed official. And if that's already in here somewhere, then we don't need to add it, but if it's not, I think that would be a good one to add.
Rick, can you read that again? Or you just...
Let me read it, let me read it again.
Okay.
Okay. She, she's got an ear that's stopped up. It says, uh, effect, it's just, it's another evaluation criteria. It just says, effectively evaluates performance of staff members who report to the appointed official. Otherwise, I'm fine with the, as it is. If that's in there somewhere, then we don't need to add it.
I guess I wonder, how would you know?
Probably through observation, I think.
Yeah.
Or conversations with you or in such... You see that, you see the need for...
What about the system and the, the actual evaluations, I guess, is maybe, is that what, what, what is driving it? We have a system in place to evaluate people?
Well, I, I mean, if you've, if you've got somebody that did, it's obvious to us that's, they're screwing up.
Yeah.
Because we're, as we encounter them around the neighborhood, this is just a hypothetical.
Yeah.
And we would hope that the county managers, they work for you. So that we're hoping that you would be taking action to pick some or fire them. That's kind of my thought process. And so...
Wouldn't like, under the current thing of board relations, wouldn't that kind of cover it? Where it says, provides information and education on issues as appropriate, responds to board member requests and adapts to board member feedback in a timely, thorough and effective manner. Maintains a culture in which staff are responsive to and communicative with board members. Effectively implements the board's goals, policy and procedures.
Yeah, I mean, generally speaking, that covers it, but it doesn't specifically cover... I mean, that's the reason.
Maybe I'm, but if that's, as long as I guess we can, you know, effectively, objectively evaluate it.
I don't think it'd be that hard to do. They all don't want to do it.
I agree, it's, it's something I absolutely have to do. I just wonder how well you're going to be able to gauge my performance on it.
How it's going to be evaluated?
Yeah.
Is the question, right?
Sorry?
How it, how it's going to be evaluated or...
Yeah. Objective, what are you going to base your assessment on that?
Yeah.
Well, I guess, I mean, we...
We continue to observe the problem, I guess, after we've talked to you.
Well, it would have to be a consensus. So in other words, obviously, I... Yeah, be more about develop staff than it is about effectively... That's kind of what, I just thought that would... Yeah. But, well, we can put it in there, but if it's, if it's not observable or evaluating, we just have to put NA. Yeah. Non-applyable. If you want to add it, I think probably under the, the leadership category would be where it would fit. Under, under the second...
I agree.
Yeah.
NA group.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I don't mind putting it in there, but we just have to, we just have to be aware that, you know, if it's not, if it's not a, you know, viable...
Probably, yeah, well, it would, you may go through a whole year and it's not observed, or then you may go through a year it would be, so...
Yeah.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
And then you provide the feedback, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'm good with it.
It ain't like a gotcha or anything, that ain't my intent.
They just want to keep the same wording?
Yeah, I like the wording just like it is, yeah.
Everybody else cool with that?
Yeah. On you?
I'm cool with it, yeah. Thank you.
And, and otherwise, I'm fine with the, the sheet that they provided, that Jeff provided us with White County on top of it there.
Is there any other?
It looks good.
Yep.
No, no other issues and I, I would ask if we could move it to action tonight or today? Since good, hopefully not tonight. We can get this thing going.
Okay. Next is the amendment to contract for audit accounts. Finance Director Tammy Key. It's yours.
Uh, we're, uh, having a request, request to extend the date to February 28th. Uh, this will allow time for the final audit draft to be submitted. Currently, they have all the documentation they need, but we've run into like a timeframe issue with the auditors and with our reports, so...
So it's not like related to, we, we got an issue that, that we're trying to...
Can I insert something here? Um, Lisa hit me with this a couple of weeks ago and I'm just going to tell it like it is. Uh, it's nothing our people has done. Uh, they asked for some, and Tammy jumped right in if I say something I shouldn't.
Be too late?
Well, that, I, I don't want our people taking the blame when it's not our fault. Uh, and I'm not slamming the auditors either, but they asked for some information on the 16th of December. And then the auditors go on vacation for the rest of the year. And, and we're running behind because they, we're enjoying Christmas vacation. So it's no, it's not a reflection, it's just something that happened, so...
I'll agree with that, but I think overall, the audit should be done prior to that point in time.
I agree too.
So, I, I mean, that's what we'll strive for this year, but I do know that they have adjusted the date for audits to be completed for this upcoming year, I mean, December 31st. So, you know, if we had done it in the right timeframe, we wouldn't be at this point in December for this audit. But I agree with what you're saying, that it was due to the fact that they did ask for documents and we provided them and they went on vacation.
Yeah, it was a timing issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Do, do... I'm saying they don't deserve a vacation.
No, I'm not. It's, stuff happens. But I'm, I'm fighting for our guys, they're doing a good job.
We're proud. We're commissioning software.
A lot of other things too, I think. So, lot, lot going on, auto moving parts.
I just don't want 20 phone calls. What do you mean, you know, that after this, me, I just wanted to clear the air?
Well, it's due to the LGC, is it four months after the end of fiscal year? Is that when it's due to LGC?
It, it used to be October and it wa, and it is this year, but that's what Tammy was saying, is they cha, they're working to change the deadline for the next audit till...
Oh, LGC's going to change the deadline?
And not October, so that'll help all counties not discuss.
Oh, yeah, because I don't think anybody's meeting October date lately, as I'm aware of.
Not now, they're not, not how complicated it's gotten.
Yeah.
Maybe a couple, but not the majority.
Good, with the transition and everything, the new software going, we should be able to do the December next year.
Any more comments?
Sounds good to me.
I'm good. Is there anything I need to do to sign something or...
Just need to move it to action and then I have a contract ready to sign.
Well, let's move it to action then.
I'm good, everybody agrees with that.
Yep.
Is there another item for you, Tammy, or is that it?
Yes, we have a resolution.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, we have a, we have some USDA loans that require us to have some revert, reserve funds set aside throughout the life of the loan. And, uh, the resolution is asking for us to adopt that language. And we have already set the funds aside.
Oh, okay.
So with this resolution, we're just acknowledging that we, we are in compliance with that.
It's for Safe Tech in Meadows, right?
The community college and the jail retention, detention center, the first and second amendment to that.
There are two different resolutions we have to approve.
Yes, yes. Yeah, one for each, one for the community college and then one for the two, the jail together.
Same resolution for each one. Do we need to move this to action too?
Please.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
I'm good with it.
Okay, I'm going to let Amber take us to, if it's anything else, take us to, uh, closed session.
Action agenda.
Oh, is it? Oh, yeah, we added one, I'm sorry.
We added three. Um, the item A is the performance evaluation tools for the manager.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
With the change.
With the change, yeah.
With the change.
All in favors, they aye?
Aye.
Item B is the amendment to contract for the auditing accounts.
Push to approve.
Do it, do it.
Push to approve.
Second.
All in favors, they aye?
Aye.
And the last item is the, the resolutions to reserve the funds for the USDA loans.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Make a, um, all in favors, they aye?
Aye.
Yeah, I'll make a motion going closed.
Second. Deborah, you read your, uh...
I'm rushing out.
Yeah. See, when Ronnie's not here, Ronnie's the one who's going to catch us there.
Yeah, now you have to do it, you're sitting in the seat.
Yeah.
All right.
It's your job now.
To consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged pursuant to General Statute 143-318.1183.
Is everybody okay, just keep going?
All in favor, just, yeah, you've already got a motion.
I made a motion and it was seconded, so...
Just say who's in favor.
Of going into closed.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need to run to the...
All right, uh, I'm going to turn this section of the meeting over to Rick for announcement.
Yeah, I would think, Mr. Chair, I'd just like to make one quick comment before we adjourn. Uh, and it's related to the hospital transition that we are, uh, doing with Novant, uh, that I think a lot, most of the public is aware of. Just want to let everybody know that, uh, the process is moving forward. It's a very complex, uh, transaction and, uh, complex process that has to occur in order to comply with the general statutes and all the healthcare laws. And we are doing that and the process is moving forward. And as soon as we are able to, uh, provide more details, we'll, we'll be the first to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Rick. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.